This meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Like a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Thank you. Everybody hear me now? The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I believe we have Mr. Josiah Watson, fifth grader from Matoka.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Think that man just owned your meeting.
Ms. Serza, would you take the role, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Item 3.3, Approval of the Agenda, is there a motion to approve that?
Madam Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to announcements, item 4.1, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will begin my report this evening by honoring the excellence of our incredible staff. Just last week, we announced the Teachers of the Year who were selected to represent their respective school levels. Abby Reynolds from DJ Montague was selected as the Elementary School Teacher of the Year. Ms. Reynolds is a special education teacher who says she loves working with her fabulous inclusion teachers and special education paraprofessionals. That passion is reflected in the instruction, support, and love that they provide to the students at DJ Montague each day. Ms. Reynolds is a proud William &amp; Mary graduate who can often be seen at local events cheering on her tribe. Congratulations to Abby Reynolds. The 2019 Middle School Teacher of the Year is Mary Glisten from Berkeley Middle School. This sixth grade math teacher says her number-one goal is to believe in her students' abilities even when the young people don't believe in themselves. I can tell you that Dr. Glisten is masterful at engaging every student in their learning. You can recognize the moment when that struggling student moves towards mastering a particular math skill. Very often, it happens thanks to Dr. Glisten's encouragement and insistence that the student does not give up on himself. Congratulations, Mary Glisten. Melissa Furr is WJCC's 2019 High School Teacher of the Year. Ms. Furr is in her ninth year of teaching visual arts at Jamestown High School. This year, she not only teaches drawing and art foundations, but she also teaches CON course nine, an innovative project-based learning class with English, Biology, World History, and Art Foundations. This course puts art in a whole new perspective for her students, using an interdisciplinary lens as a basis for analysis and discussion. Ms. Furr says she's inspired daily by the creativity of the Jamestown High School community, and of course, her students are clearly inspired by Ms. Furr as well. Congratulations, Missy Furr. The Division will recognize each of our school and level Teachers of the Year at a reception tomorrow evening. At that time, we will announce the name of the overall Division Teacher of the Year, who will then be eligible for regional and state honors as well. Although our teachers comprise the largest portion of our workforce, they are not alone in their incredible service to our students. We have amazing bus drivers, cafeteria staff, custodians, teacher assistants, central office staff, who transport, feed, and support student learning and clean and welcome in buildings. We celebrate the numerous contributions of these employees at the 2019 Support Employee of the Year brunch on April 30th. Then, our honorees will also serve as important members of my Support Employee Forum. Working collaboratively, the forum identifies needs and priorities related to the work of support employees. We're going to be recognizing some of these people this evening. Likewise, the Teachers of the Year will serve in a similar capacity as part of a teacher forum. These forums create platforms for meaningful two-way communication, which can and have led to changes within the school division. For example, based on input from the Support Employee Forum, we launched text messaging for important announcements to reach those staff members who may not have access to a computer and email throughout the day. This is just one small example of how we work together to improve systems and elevate WJCC beyond excellence. Finally, we look forward to welcoming several hundred future students to WJCC next month. Kindergarten registration begins May 3rd. Our elementary schools host kickoff events to meet parents and members of the incoming class of 2033. That's really hard to believe, 2033. As a reminder, a child must be five years old, on or before September 30th, 2019, to attend kindergarten next year. In order to register a child for school, the parent or legal guardian must bring an official birth certificate or affidavit, a copy of a current immunization record, a physical examination record, and two items for proof of residency. This proof might include a lease or utility bill, for example. Parents, you can find additional information on the School Division website, wjccschools.org. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Now's an opportunity for school board members to share committee reports or announcements. I'll start with Ms. Taylor.
I wanted to give a quick update regarding our most recent SEAC meeting, which was held on April 18th. At this meeting, we reviewed the committee's annual report, which will be coming to us soon. We also briefly discussed our recent focus groups on inclusion practices in WJCC, which took place prior to spring break, and we should have that data in May, so, very soon. And a couple of important dates coming up that I'll remind you of as we get closer. June 6th are the Exceptional Games at Jamestown High School, and July 18th and 19th, the state SEAC will be held in Richmond. And as always, check out the SEAC Facebook page for updated information and dates.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to report that on April 10th, Dr. Heron, Ms. Ombi, and I attended the Liaison Committee with the City of Williamsburg and James City County. And during that meeting, we heard an update about the number of homeless children in our division and the services that we provide to them, and we heard from Ms. Bouchois and her team, so thank you for that. We also heard from Mr. Stevens and his team about the work James City County is doing to look at their space needs in terms of office space. And then, Ms. Ombi and Ms. Larson and Dr. Heron gave an update on an event that they attended with the Williamsburg Area Association of Realtors to talk about the quality of the schools in our division and to give the realtors in our community information about the quality schools that we have, and that was very productive. And then lastly, we ended the meeting talking about communications. First, to the community at large, particularly around our capital improvement plan, and once the localities approve the five-year plan, and then it comes back to us. James City County has agreed to take the lead on communicating the contents of that plan and the impact of it on the community, so that citizens are aware about the major capital needs and plans that we have. And then also, we talked about the need, in light of the lack of funding from the state that we've experienced in the last decade or so, despite our increased enrollment, the City of Williamsburg has agreed to take the lead on a joint advocacy effort with the city and the school division and the county to speak with one voice with our local legislators to let them know that their decisions in Richmond, how they impact us in education in our community. So, I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Okay, moving on to...
One thing?
Yes.
I'd like to thank you for sharing your birthday with us.
I just noticed that.
And obviously, I apologize for the typo there, because obviously, that's not how old you are, but happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. I can move this now. I just noticed that. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
It doesn't say it on both sides?
I know. It's been my birthday. Moving on to Act 5, Recognition of Staff, Students and Staff, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we recognize several WJC staff who are integral to the success of our school division. The WJC Support Employee of the Year program brings recognition to outstanding employees and their contributions. One support employee from each school and non-school-based department was selected by their peers and colleagues. We appreciate these employees' commitment to our schools, departments, and most importantly, our students. A number of the 2019 Support Employees had scheduling conflicts and couldn't join us this evening. However, we will announce all of the recipients' names, so that we can honor them tonight. Support employees, as your name is called, please come up front and remain until all employees have been named. Bright Beginning Support Employee of the Year, Stacy Long. Clara Bird Baker Support Employee of the Year, Sherri Phillips. DJ Montague Support Employee of the Year, Shayla Barrett. JB Blatton Support Employee of the Year, Brent Green. James Rivers Support Employee of the Year, Alicia Ortega. Laurel Lynn Support Employee of the Year, Fran Massey. Matoka Support Employee of the Year, Janet Anderson. Matthew Willey Support Employee of the Year, Karen Brigham. Norge Support Employee of the Year, Kristy Snow. Stonehenge employee of the year, Greg Ripple. Berkeley Support Employee of the Year, Lisa Havel. Lewis Hornsby Support Employee of the Year, Janet Weez. James Blair Support Employee of the Year, Robin Baker. Tuano Support Employee of the Year, Veronica Sargent. Jamestown Support Employee of the Year, Mary Sharp. Lafayette Support Employee of the Year, Amanda Weaver. Warhill Support Employee of the Year, Al Chambly. Central Office Support Employee of the Year, Debbie Bailey. Operations Support Employee of the Year, Jerry Lewis. Technology Support Employee of the Year, Andrew Holshu. Transportation Support Employee of the Year, Charlie Robertson. Congratulations again to these outstanding employees. They will be formally recognized next week at the Support Employees Reception. Please, I think we're going to have a photograph, so if you move into the middle... Oh, absolutely. Thank you so much.
All the height challenge people, we're going to have you right here on the front.
Okay, moving on to item 5.2, this is a school spotlight. We will hear from Matoka tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, Mr. Jacobs is going to introduce Matoka Elementary School, where technology is elevating teaching and learning. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Madam Chair, happy birthday to you, members of the school board. Dr. Heron, wonderful to see you. Thank you so much for having us here this evening, for this opportunity. And wow, where does a principal begin when asked to think of something to highlight for the school board? Because I know you know, there are so many wonderful and exciting things happening in all of our schools, and certainly at Matoka Elementary School. I'm proud this evening to be joined by some human friends, but also some non-human friends. And we thought it would be apropos to share with you something that we know is near and dear to your hearts, and we appreciate the funding. My friend to the right hopefully will be happy with me as well, for your support over the years with instructional technology. So this evening, I have brought some of my younger friends, and, well, they're all younger. Even my teacher. And we've got some technological help this evening tonight. We hope that we give you a brief glimpse of what's going on with some of the instructional technology at the elementary level that we're using, so I'll let my friends take over from there.
Hello, our names are...
Michelle Zhou.
and Frances Smith. Today, we will be talking about our time of being Matoka Elementary School's paparazzi. This is what we call ourselves, but officially, we are the student reporters who write articles for our school website.
We noticed all the new web posts on Matoka's homepage and wondered how the posts were chosen. We spoke to Mrs. Seido, who manages our school website, and asked if we could write posts too. She agreed to let us run with this. Here are how technology tools help make this possible.
First, we pitch an idea or topic that has to be approved using Office 365. Office 365 is basically a mix of Word, Excel, PowerPoint, OneDrive, Sway, Teams, and OneNote. Office 365 is a very popular software throughout the fifth grade, because it has perks like saving automatically, and you can also send it to friends for advice. Teachers can also comment on papers and PowerPoints as well.
For student reporters, Office 365 made the whole process easier, because we can chat and edit at the same time. We can work from home, school, and continue where we left off. We can access the file from any place that has a browser.
We used our iPods and devices to take the photos. After we went on our photo binge, we typed two to three paragraphs, and it's quick, but thorough and quite enjoyable. After we are finished, we send it through Office 365 to Ms. Seido to finalize the article.
When she's done with that, then anyone who looks at our school website can see our masterpiece. Now, we would like to share a video of other fun activities using technology at Matoka.
...with differentiation makes things possible today that years ago, I think we wouldn't have seen such a huge growth within a school year for certain students that are falling behind or just don't have that prior knowledge before they get to fourth grade. Programs like Prodigy, iXL, and the lower-grade Streambox, all of these things are great tools to work with students at their level, which only helps them increase that foundational knowledge so that they can keep rising and keep meeting those expectations.
Students are able to access information, you know, in a snap, you know? Something that they can't do in every textbook or every library book, doesn't have the most up-to-date information about a subject.
I think even with like our paper technology that we have now, like with... I think even with like our paper technology that we have now, like with the Scholastic News, like the kids can access their Scholastic News online, and they can read it from home if they accidentally lose their magazine. They can see the different videos to help them relate. They can make those connections. I mean, there are things happening around the world that they don't really understand, but then they get onto Scholastic News or Newsy L.A., and they are able to connect on a student level with those things, and see and hear and really kind of buy into that topic. I think that's really important.
In the library, we use technology every day, and it looks very different than it did five, 10, or 20 years ago. We still do a lot of research electronically, and students need to have the skills to navigate those resources. But we also use technology quite a bit for helping develop soft skills. Students need to be able to collaborate and create together. They need to be able to persevere with challenges that they face. And the technology that we have today is changing so rapidly that they really need to have those skills to be able to take anything and figure out how it works and figure out how to make it work for them.
I think one of the things I've always heard is if you walk into a classroom, you know, in the 1800s versus a classroom in the 1900s, there would be no change. But I think if you walk into a classroom now, you're going to see that engagement. You're going to see that collaboration. You're going to see this 21st century skills that these students are, it's almost becoming second nature for them to, which is great to use those resources that they have and to be able to find answers to questions that before would take hours.
Hello, I would like to thank you for this time. My name is JP Alexander. Today, I am here with Josiah Walston and Aleah Savage. We are here to share how technology, specifically robots, are used to help us learn at our amazing school, Matoka. We are grateful to have two types of robots that are used in the, in the upper grades at Matoka. The younger grades have to use the cute dash dot and B-bots, but we use the Sphero's and Othobots. These robots are used with iPods, iPods or tablets, and, and connect with Bluetooth over Wi-Fi.
This is a Sphero. I would like to share some Sphero activities with you, our board members. We learn about polygons in preschool or kindergarten, so that's not, so that's nothing new for us once we get in 5th grade. So it's hard for us to, to get us excited about angles, vertices, lines, and polygons. Using the Sphero's, we applied our geometric understanding from all the years of classroom instruction to program our robots to follow a polygon taped on the hallway floor. This was really hard. Nobody got the program correct the first time. It was tough. We decided to work together to figure out the solutions. Group work is a huge part of using technology at Matoka because we have to share. Velocity became a reality using Sphero robots. For example, if you go too fast, you can overshoot the vertices. Simply put, if you go too fast, you can't control your robot. Many teen drivers should practice with Sphero's before they get behind the wheel, if you know what I mean. We had no idea how much science we were using to solve a math problem. And we had to work together and use very specific vocabulary to communicate with each other. There was a lot of hand waving and giggling. The robots were not forgiving, and we had many rogue robots zooming around the hallway floor. And it was hard to keep it in control.
You're telling me. In summary, we learned you can't give up. Sometimes making mistakes helps us rethink and try harder. Make, sure, it's not fun when you don't get something right the first time, but that doesn't mean we should give up. If we mess up the first time, you should try again.
Thank you for this opportunity to present.
Any questions?
Fellow board members, do you have questions or comments or feedback for this great crew? Hello, Ms. Young.
I, I wish, I, first of all, congratulations. That was an excellent presentation, and it's wonderful to see you guys speak up, and we don't bite, really. So, but next time you come, bring, I want to see that activity on, in a video where you were programming it. I'd like it to see it run riot all over Mr. Jacobs Elementary School, but please, because that was excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Yeah. That was so much fun. I think Josiah is going to run the show here eventually. It's, it's pretty much, but thank you for sharing. That was, that was a great presentation. And I'm, I, I would agree with Mrs. Young. I'd like to see the, see the video of your robot out of control.
Oh, I'll just say, I'll say thanks again for coming out and being so entertaining for all of us because sometimes these meetings can get dry and dull, and you really perked it up this, this, you know, evening. It, it really made it worth our while coming in, so thank you. Thank you so much.
So welcome. I hope you had a great time.
Did, thank you.
Guys, Sue Seido, who is our CRT. Mr. Thorpe, Dr. Heron, I'm going on vacation now and leaving these guys in charge.
Absolutely.
Thank you again, Matoka. Right, this brings us to citizens' comments, item number six. If you haven't had an opportunity to, to complete a speaker card, it's, it's not too late. You can turn that into our board clerk. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kelly to give instructions on speaker comments.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. I was going to give up, get up and get, let Josiah sit in my chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point in our meeting, where citizens are invited to address the board, those citizens, citizens desiring to speak should have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected, hence citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments during the meeting, your comments are being heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation. The Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair. My instructions are concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
Tristan Torme.
Hi, I wasn't on the list, but I'm with my friend Tristan. My name's Yaseen Kaplan. And I am Tristan Torme. I'm, we're both freshmen at Lafayette High School. We are appearing before you because there's something concerning happening at Lafayette High School and in James City County that you need to be aware of. Math classrooms at Lafayette High School are not using 21st century technology. I came from a math class that used today's technology, and I had the highest SOL score that I can remember. I really enjoyed that class, and I looked forward to it every day. After the first semester class ended, I went to my second semester class with a different teacher, and the teacher wouldn't allow us to use graphing calculators to do higher math functions like we did in the other class. I found this very frustrating and inconsistent. We go from sometimes being able to use graphing calculators to only being able to use four functions, which are considered illegal by the Virginia Department of Education for high school-level math. And sometimes, we can't even use a calculator. And this is a copy of the state standards, which says that my calculator is allowed. Research conducted by Dartmouth University and Pearson concluded that results stated that the full integration of graphing calculators in math classrooms improved the students' end-of-course test scores, SAT scores, and ACT scores. I'm looking for success for my peers and myself. All I'm asking is to keep up with students around the state who use TI Inspires, such as Virginia cities near DC and Richmond. They've had access to this technology, and James City County does not. The use of graphing calculators helps students of all ranges understand concepts in math. We need this technology to stay relevant with neighboring school districts. I know my teachers may think it is just a calculator, but it has changed the approach to education. It's the future of math classrooms, and we need to embrace it. The purchase of outdated technology needs to end, and the use of 20th century technology is a thing of the past. We need to embrace the technology of the 21st century. Thank you for hearing my concerns and allowing me to speak during this meeting.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Andrew Archball?
Interesting, I have a math teacher. So it's fun to see what kids think sometimes. Not saying they're wrong, just interesting to always see their point of view. So I'm coming again tonight to talk about teacher retention, about actually trying to hold on to teachers, especially being that I am a teacher. I find it to be a very important topic. And teacher retention can be influenced mostly by supportive staff. Really, your administration is going to be kind of your biggest thing, especially when it comes to in-the-building and central office. Any amount of research you do, they're going to tell you that same thing. When teachers feel like they're respected, listened to, and supported, they are more likely to stay in that position. Teachers who feel unappreciated, not supported in their goals, both in the classroom and professionally, and unheard, will be more likely to leave. It's a job both the building administration and central office to meet these needs through professional development and school climate. In every division I've worked, and I've worked in several of them, these needs have always been measured through yearly surveys completed by the staff. These surveys, both climate and professional development, show the feelings of the staff and can show what areas improvements can be made. So I went looking through the board docs to find the latest climate surveys and professional development surveys. Latest climate survey I found was February of 2017. That's the 1617 school year. It wasn't good. It showed the feedback was the lowest category, showed the feedback was the lowest category on an average of 2.8 out of 5, and the school leadership was the highest at 3.1 out of 5. For a division of excellence, I dare say something doesn't match up. If this is a division of excellence, and staff will get feedback to improve their instruction. If this is a division of excellence, then school leadership from central office would show through and how the programs are measured and their choice in professional development. If this was a division of excellence, nothing would be in the negative range. I don't find professional development surveys when I look. One look at the climate survey, and I already know that my tax dollars are being wasted. I already know that the $1,000 I gave this school system was wasted. Strong schools start with strong leaders at all levels. These are the administrators that you hired. Have you ever even looked at what they're doing? Why is it that central office was not presenting a climate survey for this year? Or last year? Where is it? Did you even ask that question? A school's front line is their support staff and their teachers, both of which cannot grow and be successful without the support of their managers, building administration, and central office. Why are these people not being held accountable for this very important task, supporting their staff? You hired these people, so why aren't you making sure they're getting the job done? I would ask you, I would ask you where the climate survey is. But as a taxpayer, I already know that answer. The survey is in the same place that my $1,000 in tax money went down the drain. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item is the consent.
No, no, no. It's Kim Hunley?
Oh, sorry.
Evening, Madam Chair. Happy birthday, and fellow board members. I just wanted to let you all know that we did have 14 teachers attend the public hearing for the Board of Supervisors and three counselors. It was awesome. We had our fund education signs and our Red for Ed signs. They were very gracious, although it was not supposed to be for public comment. They did not have objection to us standing and just having an honest dialogue. And it was also interesting for me to see their presentation of funds. Being a child of both parents that are on the Board of Supervisors, my father had 16 years. My mother's currently getting ready to go into her fourth term. I immediately called her up, and I, and she was an educator for 33 years as well, and I said, "Mom, I just don't understand." You know, since teachers are, you know, just as qualified as policemen, and we're putting out fires like firefighters, and we're doing counseling like counselors, and, you know, I wish they would just fund us first and then fund everybody else. And of course, she let me know that it doesn't work that way, but that's the way we feel. And we feel like, you know, we do a lot, and we just don't understand why the community doesn't respect that in a sense. So, but I just wanted to let you know that we did do that. We'll see. We had people also write letters, and we'll see what happens with, we're anxious to hear. I know that a lot of people, you know, with teachers trying to retain, and I would love to stay in education. I thoroughly love it, but there's three things I, you know, I miss. Reading, writing, arithmetic, that's old school. And there are three things now. It's the three Ps, I call it. It's paperwork, politics, and pennies. I just feel like sometimes the community doesn't want to raise a cent to give us a cent. And even though next year is my last year, there are three things that are really going to keep me humble and appreciative, and that is the, another three Ps, that's going to be prayer, patience, and pride. Because if I had to do this all over again, I would choose teaching again, hands down. I love what I do. I just wish the fight for appreciation wasn't quite as hard. The one thing that kind of scared me, hence the carrots that you all received, is the growth and change. Just listening to some of the community members talk about the growth and change coming, I got a little anxious. I was like, are we ready? It's like carrots, you know? If you ever planted them, you pull them up, you don't know if you're going to get one or a bunch. And I just hope that we are so ready for the growth and the change because, as the young people said, technology's changing, everything's changing, but we're getting bigger as a community, as children come in, but our staffing is not getting bigger. And so I just hope the community is listening, and next year, I hope that we'll plan to have a mass march on the Board of Supervisors to raise some taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Okay, now moving on to the consent agenda. Item 7.1, approval of minutes from the following meetings, March 15, March 19, and April 9. Item 7.2, financial report and monthly bills and payroll, March 2019. Item 7.3, personnel items, action items. Item 7.4, Resolution R-9-19 Teacher Appreciation Week. Item 7.5, Resolution R-10-19 School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Week. Item 7.6, Resolution R-11-19 National School Nurse Day. Is there a motion, please?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move that. We approve the consent, consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hornsby?
Aye.
Moving on to action items. Item 8.1, Special Education Annual Plan, entitled B Flow Through Funds. Dr. Heron?
I think we discussed these last week. Madam Chair, we're ready for the board to, to take action.
Is there a motion to approve this?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the Special Education Annual Plan entitled 6B Flow Through Funds.
And is there a second?
Second.
For the 2019, 2020?
2019, 2020 school year.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hornsby?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item 8.2, Approval of the Carl D. Perkins Local Plan. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the Carl D. Perkins Local Plan for the 2019, 2020 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item 8.3, Approval of the Purchase Request for Centralized Storage Infrastructure? It's delayed.
It's really delayed.
We're having technology issues.
Can't blame on the school system for this because it's right in the city.
If he's having it.
All of us are struggling here.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the purchase request for centralized storage infrastructure to ABS Technology for the Cisco HyperFlex solution in the amount of $147,770.04.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 8.4, Approval of the School Bus Purchase? Can we get a motion? I mean, can we get?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the purchase for six school buses in the amount of $658,548 from Sunny Merriman Incorporated and the associated budget transfer.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 8.5, Mathematics Textbook Adoption, Algebra I.
Madam Chair, I move approval of adoption of the Houghton-Mufflin-Harcourt Algebra I Virginia Textbooks in the amount of $113,575, and I hope I present.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Okay, thank you everyone for bearing this. Moving on to proposed agenda items, item 9.1. Before we begin discussion of this, I wanted to give just some background information. So, the Memorandum of Understanding between WJCC Schools and the WJCC Education Foundation, we have several MOUs with varying organizations to outline our relationship and what that will look like. Some examples are the Williamsburg Library System, the Police Department as it relates to our SROs. This memorandum was actually due to expire last year, and we extended that for a year so that we could have an ad hoc committee of Mr. Kelly and Ms. Hummel thoughtfully examine necessary updates, working with foundation folks as well as our attorney. So I will turn it to Mr. Kelly and Ms. Hummel, who will walk us through that process and we'll learn about her.
Sure, the, you know, the MOU for the foundation was first approved in September of, I think it was 2015, and, you know, started the, started our education foundation. Our foundation has done, I think, incredible work to support teacher innovation in the classroom, really has, I think, brought some excitement to some of our teachers, as well as given the community an opportunity for participation in our school system and to have a direct influence on what goes on in the class. Besides that, giving out the grants, I think, has always been a good day and community members and donors get to see that, get to participate in that, and get to see for themselves what's actually happening in our schools. So coming to the, to renewal of the bylaws, it was really a collaborative effort because everybody was pulling on the rope together and wanted to get things moving in the right direction. There was really four, four topic items. And, you know, one of the things with the bylaws is, I had to write this down when our lawyer told us, it's not a big deal until it's a big deal. And some of the bylaws is, are there to, if things, things start to go bad, that there's a, there's coverage for that to protect school system, donors, and foundation board members. So we have, we approached, we had good discussions, Mrs. Hummel and I had good discussions with the foundation, members of the foundation board, and the bylaws that is presented here tonight have been approved by the foundation and accepted by their board. There was really the four, the four things. There was, in our original proposal, there was some language in there about an executive director, assignment of an executive director may be done, that was taken out. It's also, it's, it's not a will or should or shall, it's may if things go bad. So we don't anticipate that that would have to come to pass. The second thing we talked about was posting bonds by the foundation officers. I think we wrote, we settled on a good compromise is that the bonds would be required by those members of the foundation officers who have fiduciary signature authority. The foundation has good policies and procedures in place to protect the foundation as well as the donor's money. And the bonds, I think, will, by the, by the folks with signature authority, I think will protect those board members as well as give confidence to the, to the donors that they are giving money to a bonded organization. And I think that's really, there were two other talks about articles of incorporation. That was eliminated from this because those have already been, the foundation is now incorporated. It was not in September of 15, so that language could come out. There was a couple of Ts crossed and commas that were added. And we also indicated that the found, except to the extent required by law, it is not intended, the role of the school board to manage or be involved in the operations of the foundation so that the foundation is in accordance with law, a separate entity from the school system. So, so Ms. Hummel and I had some very, very good and very productive and very positive conversations with the foundation. I think the, the foundation is in, is comfortable with our bylaws. I think Mrs. Hummel and I are comfortable with what's proposed. And we would be willing to answer any questions from board members, but we are comfortable moving forward to approve the, approve the bylaws.
I just wanted to add that Mr. Kelly did a nice job working with our attorney to go through all of these different points, since he was actually one of the, the only school board member that was originally on the board when this whole thing started.
Wow, that's true, isn't it?
Yes, so, so that's why he, he received such a great honor to be the, the partner with me to review the new MOU. So I do feel good about this. I feel good about the changes that the attorney wanted us to put in and that we came to an agreement. And it seems like administration is on board, our attorney's on board, Jim and I are on board, and it's just whether or not all everybody else is. Oh, and the foundation is on board, which is the most important thing. They took, they took this MOU back to their executive committee and voted on it, and so they're all good too. I think at this point, it's just, does anyone have any questions?
And then just for clarification, this MOU will last?
Three years.
Three years.
Right, so it renews, renews every three years?
Okay, so, hearing no questions, we'll move this on to the next agenda to be voted on? Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Jim and Julie, for all your hard work and working with foundation staff and attorney. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 10, Information Items, this is our Equity Through Engagement Emerging Scholars.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, Dr. Shepherd is here to give us an update on the Emerging Scholars Program, what the program does, the students that are served through the program, and some of the impact that the program is starting to have in our school division. Thank you, Dr. Shepherd.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Happy birthday, members of the school board. Dr. Heron, it is a pleasure to be here tonight, even after the Matoka children. Thank you for the opportunity to present as a part of the Equity Through Engagement series, an update on the Emerging Scholars Program. Let me set the stage by saying the Emerging Scholars Program exists to identify, support, and nurture the academic potential and continuous growth of underrepresented students, such as minority students, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and English learners. Since the program was reestablished in 2014, the goal has been to prepare emerging scholars to be prepared to take the most rigorous courses they can. This dovetails with our strategic plan. The Emerging Scholars Program is aligned with WJCC's strategic emphasis on educational equity. We're focused on promoting equitable access to rigorous academic courses and programming. This program identifies students from underrepresented populations who have academic potential, and we nurture them academically, socially, and emotionally. Gifted Resource Teachers work with our emerging scholars on a weekly basis and help them build an academic identity, self-confidence, self-esteem. Over time, we have developed a curriculum based on the needs of our scholars. The curriculum includes opportunities to develop critical thinking, problem-solving skills across content areas. The Strategy Games introduce students to ways to think analytically, as well as build social skills, and allow them to gain self-assurance and persistence. Our parent outreach efforts are an ongoing and growing component of this program. Am I on the wrong side? For example, this year, we held three nurturing potential workshops for emerging scholars and their parents, and you'll hear more later in this presentation. Restructured in 2014, the Emerging Scholars Program began with 17 identified first graders from four schools. In the second year, two schools were added, so we had four schools with first and second grade, and two schools with first grade, and so on. Until this year, all elementary schools are at varied levels of implementation. The exciting news is the first four schools had their first cohort of fifth graders who were transitioning to middle school next year. So you may be wondering, who are our emerging scholars? First selected at the end of kindergarten, our emerging scholars have strong cognitive capacity as demonstrated on a culturally neutral, nationally known ability assessment. The students form a cohort who meet weekly with a gifted resource teacher, and through these experiences, they develop that academic identity I mentioned while growing in self-confidence and self-esteem. It is really exciting to see them grow academically, socially, and emotionally, and show enthusiasm when they succeed at a task they previously didn't think they could conquer. The Office of Gifted Education has invested in promoting access in several ways. We administer a universal screener to all kindergarten and second grade students in the hope that no student is overlooked vis-à-vis academic potential. In addition, over time, all elementary schools have had staff trained and gifted characteristics of students from these populations, as well as how to interpret results of the screenings to inform expanded referral rates for emerging scholars and gifted programs. The results show an increase in classroom teacher advocacy for these students. We've built a framework and capacity to support our students from the earliest grades. A third effort relates to our identification process for these students. One example is our focus on English learners. In 2014, we didn't have any L's in our program. One result of modified identification processes began in 2017, and I'll speak to this in the next slide, but we went, we were up to 13. And this year, we started with identified 23 English learners in the Emerging Scholars Program. This slide captures the total number of identified emerging scholars from 2014, 15, through 2018, 19, and by demographic variable. The dark blue top line reflects the total number of identified students. We began with 17, and to date, we've identified 147. The light blue line, now from the bottom of the line graph, are our English learners. As I mentioned, we didn't have any when we started out. So in 2017, as a result of strategic identification processes that expanded conversations with teachers, as well as increased advocacy by gifted resource teachers, in concert, we grew to 13 L's in 17, 18, and 23 at the beginning of this year. The yellow line reflects our students with disabilities in the program. There were four in 2014 and 19 at the beginning of this school year. Next, the light green line are our minority students. Of the first group of emerging scholars, six were minority. This school year, that number is 98. Finally, the dark green line, excuse me, are economically disadvantaged students. In 2014, 15, 12 of the 17 were economically disadvantaged. And in 2018, 19, that number was 100 of the 147. Emerging Scholars Program is helping to promote equity by building their academic identity and introducing rigorous opportunities and experiences. This slide shows program supports that buttress the growth of the program so that it can find and nurture potential and make a difference with our students. I briefly discussed our efforts to increase access, and here you can see the professional development trainings, universal screening, grades over time, as well as collaborative efforts, first with SHIP, but then adding more resources as part of the program. One metric is to show the impact of purposely providing pathways for students to have access to rigorous courses and programming. A challenge nearly every school district across the nation faces is having the makeup of those students receiving enrichment services to mirror the overall distribution of the school or the district, especially our minority populations. This slide shows that the minority distribution of all of our kindergarten students has remained rather constant over the last two school years. Yet, the distribution of kindergartners eligible for services from the Office of Gifted Education has increased markedly over the two years, from 25% to 42%. In case you're wondering about the data for this school year, they're not yet available because spring screening has just started. So that will be coming up at the end of the school year. Emerging Scholars is a pathway that provides exposure, experiences, and support to students beginning in our, beginning in our young grades. We surveyed some of our emerging scholars, and this is what they shared. "I like emerging scholars because it's fun and you get to learn." And this is why we introduced those strategy games. "I like playing strategy games because it involves teamwork and being focused." No, 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 no. I wanted to tell, speak to it before we show the video. That slide. I would like to share a brief video with you to give you a feel about the nurturing potential workshops that we held. They were for students and parents. The students worked as budding engineers, and the parents received resources, ideas, collaborated with one another, built community, and received strategies to support and ways to nurture academic potential at home. One of the most fun moments was teaching the parents some of the strategy games because we knew the kids were the experts, so they could really help their parents. Parents also got a chance to be budding engineers during our third session two weeks ago. This was a multifaceted collaboration with SHIP, the Department of Community-Family Engagement, with the Williamsburg Regional Library, and Community and Medical Interpretation Services. So now, enjoy the video. So now, enjoy the video.
The program came about, I would say, in an effort to provide a nurturing environment for children who we were able to identify through a universal screening in kindergarten as being children of potential. So, we're able to provide equity in terms of if there have been factors that may be a part of the child's life, like if they have dual languages in their home. And so, I started working with them in first grade. The changes that have come about, it's mostly a growth in their self-esteem. They belong to an academic group that meets regularly. They belong to this group that's going to be remembered. The growth that they show is growth that's across the board, more than just academic growth.
I enjoy volunteering and coming up here and working with these kids because they're the future. I'm trying to spark an interest in them and get them interested in the technology and the engineering. Over my years of teaching, I've collected various activities, various projects. When I do STEM activities, I try to tie in all the courses, so I mention math, science, English, history, all of that together. And then, when they talk about it in math class, it makes more sense.
So, you may ask, what's next for the Emerging Scholars Program? Well, as I mentioned, our first cohorts of fifth graders are transitioning to middle school. So, at two of our middle schools, we are going to pilot a mentoring program for the sixth-grade emerging scholars. By providing support academically, socially, and emotionally, we will nurture their potential while preparing them for increasingly rigorous coursework. In addition, we are having strategic conversations about replicating this nurturing potentials workshop in other schools to increase capacity and relationship building between the school and the home. We will also monitor our middle-school emerging scholars to collect data on future course selections, preparing them for honors, advanced placement courses, dual enrollment. Thank you for letting me share our emerging scholars with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Shepherd, I have two questions for you. The first has to do with the cohort and working with kids, you know, from as early as kindergarten all the way up to fifth grade. Because the nature of our community can be transient, particularly in the economically disadvantaged, are you seeing a drop-off in the numbers as kids get older, or is that fairly constant as they move through the grades?
That's a great question. It's a little bit of both. The transancy is hitting all of our grade levels, but we're then, with the students that come in, it's like, we're constantly looking to identify students who would be eligible for our Emerging Scholars Program, so we add them at any grade.
Oh, okay.
We just begin, when we have that first universal screener in spring of kindergarten, that's where we begin, and eligibility means first, second, third, fourth, fifth. We talk about other enrichment opportunities.
Thank you. And my second question has to do with outcomes. I know it's early yet, but I'm just curious what you're seeing in terms of academic achievement and engagement. I've heard that the big focus is the social-emotional piece and the self-confidence, which is critically important, and I applaud you for that. But I'm just curious on the academic side, if you can share any observations.
I'd be glad to look into that a little more in-depth for you all and get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
If I could interject, I think one of the key things when we talk about equity is really having students believe in themselves early on. And as we move into sixth grade with this program and support them through the mentoring program that Dr. Shepherd's mentioned, the hope and desire and the purpose is that some of these students will then feel the confidence to take honors classes and advanced classes who maybe wouldn't have done otherwise. So, it's just another entry point to really allow more diversity in our higher-level classes for students who maybe wouldn't have thought or wouldn't have been ready without all of these planned experiences.
But would you anticipate perhaps the added benefit of perhaps better grades or better summative scores and summative assessments and so forth?
Absolutely, and I think we can certainly get, we can look at some of that data. And then, as a side result, there may be some more students actually being identified as gifted and entered the gifted program, but that's not the original intent of the program. It's really to create confidence so those students can go to higher-level classes. But absolutely and certainly, we could monitor that as a along-the-way monitoring measure, absolutely.
Dr. Beer?
Yeah, a couple of questions. What is the screening device or devices that's used with kindergartners, five-year-olds?
We universally screen all kindergarteners with this nationally-normed, culturally-neutral assessment, and we use-
Sorry, it's what?
It's a culturally-neutral, nationally-normed ability assessment.
Okay.
And all kindergarteners are given this. And from those results, they're used by principals for placement decisions. They're used in the Office of Gifted Education for both gifted identification and for emerging scholars. From that, then, we're also working with the classroom teachers of these students and discuss whether it is the right fit. Are they, they have the academic potential as measured on this assessment, and then they are in need of some additional supports, affirmation, advocates, you know?
Okay, another question is, I see 2017, 18, overall minority distribution of K students, forty-two percent. What is the percentage of students that do not fit into these categories? The other kindergarteners?
I don't think I understand the question, sorry.
Well, if these are the overall minority distribution of K students, the students who aren't minority students-
Oh, okay.
What is their percentage of acceptance?
Again, let me look into that. There's so many data points. You guys are giving me great ideas, so I will add that to my list. How about that?
Yeah, I'd like to know that. And I guess the other question I have is, what happens to the other fifty-eight percent of kindergarteners in the minority kids? There are forty-two percent who make the cut. What happens to the other fifty-eight percent?
Well, I think we have some other programs in place in our schools. You know, this is one person's, you know, lens of trying to work with these students and get them in rigorous courses. I think that our combination of working with our MTSS and the supports and the tiered supports that we have for students and keeping an eye on them and funneling them and providing that pathway.
Yeah, part of my concern, and it's part of my background as well, is the whole issue of early identification has always been fraught with varying degrees of unreliability, or they're because they are as young as they are, that their performance is not as, it does not operate as a very good predictor of success later on. So, that's why I'm asking about the, you know, the assessment and the screening, because one of the things that does happen, and this is normal development, is there are other kids, there are going to be other students that are in that fifty-eight percent, who in a relatively short amount of time can be right up there with the other forty-two percent. So, that's what I'm, you know, I'm-
And that's why we have multiple-
I'm not struggling with it.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, I think these are important questions to-
That's why we always have open doors. Every year, a student can be referred, can be, a teacher can advocate. I've had teachers come up to me already, you know, "I really want to talk about so-and-so when we get to eligibility." And so, kindergarten isn't the last horizon for them. It's just our beginning.
And I guess the other part of that is, how predictable are the scores that the forty-two percent kids get? Is that, is that a reliable predictor of how they're going to be doing in two, three, four, or five years?
I think we're still in our naissance of the program enough, so we're collecting those-
These are things you can, you can-
Yeah, absolutely.
Begin to incorporate-
Yes, thank you.
Very, I think that's very important.
I agree.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. I appreciate the presentation. What I was really looking forward to is, I was looking for, and then you provided that last slide about what's next for the Emerging Scholars Program. You know, you have a lot of students in there from different socioeconomics and the English technical language and all those. It'll be interesting to see how they progress through the middle school and the high school years into some of those advanced placement, now that they have the confidence that they can, that they can do that type of work. And it'll be interesting to see if there's metrics that'll be available that, you know, from the whole program, that how they transition to those courses in relation to the total population, to try to get better representation in the advanced placement courses in the high schools and in the middle schools. So, I think that's an important part of the program, is the transition from elementary, and that they don't fall off the map from fifth grade to sixth grade, so.
Or on that runway.
Yeah.
You know?
I'm going to see that, and, you know, and so, you're going to need something similar on the middle school level to shepherd them into high school and to get those kids taking some of those more challenging classes, which they might not otherwise have taken.
It was, yeah, thank you very much for doing this. I am glad that included in this that we're going to monitor sixth-grade emerging scholars and future registration in advanced classes. How are we going to monitor them?
We're going to be working in partnership between the school counselor and the gifted liaison at the middle schools, and develop some of those, you know, lunch bunch and mentoring. We're going to keep an eye on academic, making sure they're making strong and sound adjustments to middle school, which, as we know, can be difficult in the best of times. So, we are building that program, and we're going to roll it out in the fall.
So, we're going to follow these students, continue to follow them through middle school? Because one of the concerns I have is developing programs such as this, and then not having any actual data to show the impact it's having upon students. And because I, from what I understand, the overall goal would be to see students opt to do more challenging coursework in the future. I mean, and you're talking about rigorous work, and hopefully that would happen. But you're talking about the assessment that's given in kindergarten. What is the name of the assessment? Do you know the name off the top of your-
Sure, it's a Naglary Nonverbal Aptitude Test, Third Edition.
Say that again, please.
Naglary Nonverbal Aptitude Test, Edition Three.
Okay, sounds pretty academic.
Some people just call it the N-NAT. How about that?
I always like the jargon, you know, okay? And because I'm always interested in, I mean, we have this predictor, but I would actually like to see some, maybe at the end of the sixth grade, seeing some actual, and I do recognize that some of these students are transitory and probably move, but seeing some actual data to demonstrate the success of this program for those students. Because I think that, because I'd like to see it translate into something that is actual working for kids.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Ms. Hummel?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to, I think the other thing I'd really want to mention is that I think this is really critical, and it's really important, and it is really addressing one of the concerns that I know citizens have had in our community, and that is doing some things that are going to reduce the achievement gap for minority students. So, I, I think it's, you're on the right track, and starting at the very beginning, it's crucial. It's really critical. So, I, yeah, I applaud that for sure.
Dr. Beer's and Ms. Hummel?
Well, Dr. Beer said exactly what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
So, anyway, that's, and he said it so much more eloquently. I just wanted to say that clearly, the board is very, very interested in this topic, asking for a lot of information and data points and tracking, but we couldn't even ask those questions until we have a program like this. So, thank you for all the work that goes into the first steps, the creation of something like this, to close the achievement gap, because it is a, I think, I'm speaking for myself, but I think all of us up here are very concerned about closing the achievement gap and looking beyond any kind of implicit bias that we might have, that we don't realize we have, in dealing with some of the different subgroups in our system. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. And I would like to say, I do echo Ms. Hummel and Dr. Beer's points. I do have one, just one additional question. I'm, thank you for paying particular attention to specific subgroups, and I'm just wondering, with regard to any or all of the subgroups, there's an increase now for each of them. Does that mirror the percentage of students within our divisions? For example, students with disabilities, we're at nineteen currently. So, does that percentage kind of mirror the percentage of students in the division identified as having special needs?
That's a great question. What I focused on, the data that I had, had to do with minority kindergarten, but we can certainly drill down on more and more and more and get you more information now that you've sort of seen it.
Yeah, with each of the subgroups. Yeah, that would be, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you for allowing us to ask so many questions. We appreciate the work that you're doing.
Give me a few things to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Okay. Moving on to board member comments. I'll start with Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a handful of things. I'd like to start, though, just for the, just to clarify for the public, to ask Dr. Heron when the last climate survey was fielded, if you could just please provide that for the publics.
Yes, we actually had a climate survey this year, a work condition survey that was completed by every teacher in January. It was actually a VDUE survey, and we purposefully set aside a time in the teacher's day on a workday, and due to that very strategic approach, we had a ninety to ninety-five percent of teachers and non-teachers taking the survey this year. The outcomes on that survey are actually going to the schools directly. They're going to be analyzed with the schools. We're looking to see what we can do better. Being in Virginia Department of Education survey, some of the questions were not things that we actually have control over, but some others were things that we feel that we can work on once we get all of the results analyzed and looked at. It's something we take very seriously as a division. I think input is important, feedback is important, especially from our teachers and staff at the school level, and we look forward to responding to whatever feedback that we receive.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple more things. I just wanted to share with you all that last week, I went on a tour to James River Elementary School to visit the Dolphins with Mr. Eisenhower and Mr. Pons. So, Mr. Stut and his team gave us a wonderful tour, and it was good to visit and to take both Mr. Pons and Mr. Eisenhower to a school that they'd never visited before. I also wanted to say that I attended, I didn't run the dog on Saturday, but I kind of walked and ran, kind of hybrid, the dog on Saturday, and it was fabulous to see hundreds of our students and dozens of our staff members out in the early morning on a gorgeous day after kind of a rainy evening, and it was really, it's a great community event, and I'm glad that we participate in it. I also wanted to thank Ms. Hunley and her friends for attending the Neighborhood Forum for James City County. I had the opportunity to listen to your remarks, and they were wonderful. And I think advocacy is an important aspect of our work in this community to, especially in the week of funding situation with regard to the state, to keep making sure that everyone is aware of our needs and providing not only the data that Dr. Heron and her team provide, but the human face and the stories behind it, too. I think storytelling is a really important part of the picture. So, thank you. And lastly, I know we're not supposed to get political up here, but I just would like to say, and I know it's a little bit earlier, early for this, but I'd like to say that I'm going to be voting for Josiah Walston for Congress in a couple of years. So, he's a remarkable young man. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Dr. Beer?
Yeah, I only just have a couple of things to say, just to remind, once again, the public, that the Port of Supervisors has not made its final decision. the public that the Board of Supervisors has not made its final decision about their budget, which has an impact on our budget. So I encourage those of you out there to contact your local representatives and let them know that you support what we're trying to do up here. The other thing, less serious, and, and I very much look forward to it, I have, my golly, I'm going to be out probably every night for a couple of weeks, but I intend to visit every one of the schools that is doing their music programs in the evening. It's, it's phenomenal to see that. Those of you who are interested in, 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 in watching students become really truly fine musicians, go onto the, go onto our website and you will see under the calendar where those various things are taking place. So I, I heartily endorse that, and, and I think you should think about that as well. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, I'd like to wish you a happy twenty-ninth birthday. You don't look a day over twenty-eight to me. Although I think you have a twenty-two-year-old kid, but I'd also like to thank the board for allowing me to participate electronically last meeting. I was at a business trip that I could not reschedule or, or modify, so I appreciate that. Couple of weeks ago, I went to see Newsies at Jamestown. That was an incredible show, almost phenomenal, but incredible. Over fifty kids on, on the, in the cast, and it was just, congratulations to those students and to Mr. Stone for a great presentation. The, the, the waiting line for tickets was incredible, there, the, there were tickets at Will Call, and if you didn't show up, they were giving the tickets out, and there must have been a hundred people in line, and I think in the show that I went to, nineteen got in, but it was, it was a great presentation. And I'd like to thank the students that came out today, the freshmen from Lafayette, to talk about the issues in their classroom. It's always great to hear from our students and to get their input, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Young?
Okay, thank you. A lot has already been addressed. First of all, I, too, am going to vote for Josiah in just a few years. It's, it's, it's wonderful to see young people who take charge and, and are confident, and he certainly exhibited that tonight. I was, I was, it was fun to watch from up here. I want to encourage people to please support the budget. I know that Ms. Huntley and, and all of our teachers are relying on that. One of the things that I, I'm hopeful is that they will support the budget, because one of the things that we don't think about is when we support the budget in its entirety, especially when it comes to pay increases for our teachers and, and staff, is that it, it also helps them in the future. I know I'm retired, and so I think about these things, but it's, we're not talking just about today, we're talking about, about quality of life at retirement. And if we don't get those pay raises on a regular basis, then we are actually depriving our, our employees of having a successful retirement. So I want people to think about that, because it's, it's really important, having, had that experience myself. So thank you for doing the Board of Supervisor advocacy, I think that's incredible. I'm anxious to hear about the results of the climate survey. But lastly, I'm going to pile on with Newsies. I, I, the day before, and I apologize to the community, I called Ms. Serza, who's an angel, and said, "I want to go on Friday night." And she says, "Oh, okay." So when I got there, Mr. Stone came and handed me my ticket, but as I'm walking into the Will Call, the line was so long, I'm, I'm walking past these people thinking, "What is this?" But when I got there, I suddenly realized that these were people that were waiting to see this outstanding performance. There was tap dancing, there was gymnastics, there was amazing creative scenery, the, the dialogue, dialogue was fun, and the acting was outstanding. I just want to commend Mr. Stone for that performance. I had never seen Newsies, but I have been seeing things on Broadway, and I thought that rivaled some of the things I've seen, which maybe that doesn't tell you too good things about Broadway, but that, that show was amazing. So thank you, Mr. Stone, for another outstanding performance.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mrs. Taylor?
Well, now I'm sad that I missed it.
Oh, you should be.
Disappointing, yes.
Should be, yeah.
All right, just another quick congratulations to all our support employees who we recognized this evening. In a former life, I was a paraprofessional, so I know how hard these employees work. And I'm also excited to attend the Teacher of the Year ceremony tomorrow, looking forward to that.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Hummel?
Gosh, I was going to say all those things that everybody else already said. I, I am going to tell a story, because I do want to thank the speakers, the student speakers that came tonight, and the mother of Tristan was one of my best friends in high school. And so she emailed me about how does one's, do you have to have permission, all those kind of things. So it was a really good, no, no, we welcome students to come up and talk at the school board meeting, and it is, and then both of us were talking about how when we were in high school, we would never have thought about speaking in front of a school board meeting, and so it really speaks, I think, volumes about the advocacy spirit in the children in our school system, that they care enough about their own education to come and speak at a school board meeting and, and kind of get beyond that discomfort that comes from public speaking. So, anyway, I just wanted to tell that story. Of course, thank all the Matoka kids. There was a great sense of humor in whoever was helping them write the script. So I just, there, there is that director behind the scene, that whoever that person was, was, was great. Josiah, Josiah probably did it. Newsies, wonderful. I, I left that knowing that Friday and Saturday and Sunday was going to be just over, just word of mouth if nothing else. And I kept thinking, ah, I wish they had the opportunity to do several more performances for all the people that I know would want to watch that. And then my final thing is just to say to everyone out there to, to reach out to your Board of Supervisor, to your city council people, to fully fund our budget and meet the gap, because our school system is a reason why we are one of the communities that's not declining in population but growing in population. It is not because of our fire department and our police department and our library. I mean, those are wonderful organizations, but the reason people move into our community is because of our schools. So they do deserve, as Ms. Huntley said, they, they do deserve the primary consideration in funding, so I just wanted to put that extra plug in there to let your representatives know, to fully fund our school system's budget so that our teachers can get the raise, the raise that they need, and we can get our counselors.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Thank you to all my board colleagues, ditto to what everyone has said, Newsies was phenomenal. And advocacy is so important, so I encourage the community to definitely take to heart the words that Ms. Hummel and other board members have spoken. This time of year is so exciting with Teacher of the Year Award and Support Staff of the Year Award, and so I'm always grateful that I have an opportunity to participate in those really fun and exciting days. So I was with Dr. Heron and Mr. Baker and other staff as we hand-delivered the balloons to our grade-level teachers, and they were color-coordinated with the school colors. And so that's a very fun day, definitely enjoyed that. Wanted to share, give a shout-out to James Blair Middle School and their science department. Ms. Jaclyn Miller, who actually was a grade-level Teacher of the Year a couple of years ago, worked with administration, Dr. Murphy, to coordinate a grade-level field trip to VIMS. Dr. Beers, I wanted you to hear this particular, I think this is so cool, this is like the coolest thing ever. So I, I want to spend just a couple minutes sharing this, similar in some ways to the field trip that Tuana has coordinated for years with her kayaking. And so this was the inaugural trip, they're hoping to do this year after years, the entire seventh grade attended a field trip to VIMS. I chaperoned it, so in my seventeen years of chaperoning a field trip, this was great. It was so much-
Phenomenal.
It was phenomenal. So all of the volunteers, all of the students, we had twenty-nine, the teachers and VIMS staff put on hip waders, and we went into the York River with sains and nets, and we collected a variety of organisms, we brought them to the beach, and we classified them, we put them in aquariums, and then we talked about the invertebrates and the vertebrates and the shrimp and the fish and the oysters and the snails and the worms, and it, all of the children were so stoked and so excited and so engaged. And then we actually got to go to a real lab and perform a lab on oyster reefs. So we looked at microscopic organisms and we got to classify those, and the staff at VIMS are able to differentiate learning, and so we had students who were on several levels, and so they were able to perform that and have those tools available to meet the needs of all the students in the classroom. So it was just an incredible field trip, and I learned so much about little tiny mud crabs and oysters and snails, and so that was great. So thanks to the administration for working with Ms. Miller. She actually worked at VIMS before she came to work for WJCC, and so she knew the staff there. It was working there that she learned that she wanted to be a science teacher. And so I just wanted to give a shout-out to James, James Blair for that. Wanted to thank, too, all of our students who were willing to come and speak tonight. I'm always impressed with students who, who are engaged and want to share their perspective with us. And then wanted to give a shout-out to Lafayette, this Thursday morning at the crack of dawn at six AM, their band will be going to Gatlinburg, Tennessee, and I'll be chaperoning eighty kids to Gatlinburg for a band competition. So talk about music, we're going to hear some really good stuff, and so they'll be competing with other regional bands across this area. So that concludes my board member comments. So I'm going to move on to upcoming events. So Teacher of the Year, as Dr. Heron mentioned, is on tomorrow, evening, five fifteen at Matoka Woods. The Support Employee Recognition Ceremony is on April thirtieth at King of Glory Lutheran Church at ten thirty in the morning. The Policy Committee meets on May eighth at eight AM in the Annex, in room three hundred. The Special Education Advisory Committee meets on May ninth at the Rec Center at six thirty in the evening. The Retirement and Service Pen Recognition Ceremony is on May sixteenth at five o'clock in Matoka Woods at Loma Mary, and the Student Advisory Committee is on May twenty-second at three thirty in the Media Center at Lafayette. And Ms. Young would like to add-
And CTE is May eighth at three thirty here, not, not here.
At the Annex.
At the, yeah, the Annex. This is not the Annex.
Okay, this is not the Annex.
In case anyone wanted to know.
Thank you, so we'll get that added to the calendar.
And I think this Student Advisory Committee meets at three.
Yeah, meets at three.
Not three thirty.
At three o'clock.
Late time adjustment.
We're going to be at Jamestown at eight o'clock in the morning?
I hope I'm awake.
And it's, okay, thank you, thank you for that. And then upcoming meetings, the next closed session on May seventh, six PM at the Annex in room three oh nine, followed by a work session in room three hundred at six thirty, and then a closed session on May twenty-first.
I'm, I'm going to send you an email to see if we can't possibly move that back thirty minutes.
Just that time. So that may be adjusted and will be published, but that's here in Stryker, in room one twenty-three, and then followed by a regular meeting here in city council chambers on the twenty-first at six thirty. So with that, this is my board member comments.